First off, can I throw your floor back? You hear what dresses?
Yeah.
Sure.
You know what? The reason I'm here is about the garbage in the village.
What garbage?
The garbage. It's that.
Really? Where?
Oh, the right, you know, when you're going down Prince Island Hills on the right side, you know, there's people, the empty garbage in our dumpsters and a lot.
Well, but we need your dumpster. Why? That's a private issue for you guys at the place that I live.
Well, it's gotten worse.
For all the police.
I know that the police usually don't want to get involved with part of the property.
That's their job. We get involved, fine. Not the village.
No, no, they would come down.
Technically, technically, it's an EEC issue over the police issue because it's illegal dumping, but they can address it and help you with it.
Again, do you, you call any of my officers about illegal dumping? My officers just wanted to ask.
Okay.
You get his call.
All right. So the other thing, it's gotten a lot worse.
Well, so you're talking about, yeah, but when you say garbage, let's be a little more clear here. You know?
Trash. People throw it.
Put it in your dumpster. Not, not people dumping it along the street.
Now, they're putting it like, we have, it's just like, I think it's become a bigger problem than it was before because now people that live on Partition Street on that side of the village, they don't have a car. They're just throwing it, dumping it where they can.
I don't, I, I, that I don't know, but it had to get out of Verrabell Park a lot because it was disgusting in Verrabell Park.
Yeah. No, I'm just, it's like.
Well, I just, I, I don't see a garbage problem in the village. If people are illegally dumping in other people's dumpsters, that's our police issue here. You know? I mean, people, what you do, pull the bag out, get an email. I mean, that's what you do.
Oh, my, I pulled, you know.
With rubber gloves on.
With rubber gloves on.
What'd you say?
With rubber gloves on.
Hasn't that seen a miss?
And we try to have who dumped it and then we go back to them and go, eh, you know, you can't.
Just illegal dumping, they can be fined for littering. We've done it before when we, we used to be at, in the Verrabell's parking lot and people did the same thing, but nobody was there. Those people, they, the police would go to their house and maybe get, maybe get summoned for illegal dumping.
Now, I guess I have a question, Pat. You said dumpsters, you have dumpsters at all your apartment buildings or?
Well, people can provide their own garbage bins, but at our restaurants, the tenants at the restaurants.
Okay, so the restaurants is where the problem is. It's not at the apartment buildings.
No, like, they, for instance, tenants, I'm not, and some people are just putting their garbage on property and just leaving it there.
They do them all, all the time. Couches, toilets, they do it all the time.
Yeah.
Because they can, and they don't want disposal, but legally because it costs them money.
We've had people in trailer load hold the garbage.
That's where, I mean, that's got, that's where police got to be called. Those people got to be fined for doing that. I mean, I mean, that's illegal.
Yeah, before, before there were bins, it was full then. When I lived there, everyone dumped their garbage there all the time. So now there's no place to dump it because it's all filled in.
You know, we see it too, like, around the village, when people leave, I always say, like, two minutes in yard sale, yard sale's over, they put out free. That's good for 24 hours and it rains and that stuff's still out there, it'll be crushed by others' garbage and you gotta get rid of it. And they don't get rid of it, they won't pick it up and they'll be charging for it. Because I, you know, if someone leaves a couch out, it's going to be too racist if people don't want it dead. I don't mind if people put stuff out for 24 hours, because there aren't people that go around looking for free stuff.
So if I find garbage on our property, I can call the police and they will come?
Next day? Absolutely.
Okay.
Now, with that being said, you know, if there's garbage in your dumpster and it's somebody threw out a chair or something like that, somebody does not identify with it and goes back to somebody else, it's very difficult to prove the cause.
Oh, yeah, of course.
However, if somebody leaves a bag of garbage in there and you mail their address to them, that's a lot easier for us to.
And we have cameras, so we can use our cameras.
Well, yeah, like I said, we will, we will respond and we will, uh, we will investigate it, but we just, we need to know that it's happening, so by all means, we'll just call.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
That was it.
Garbage? All right. Thank you. Can you just stick to the meeting? I want to talk to you real quick after the meeting.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, same as on the meeting we were trying to set up.
Okay.
Uh, before, Mr. Bell, are you here just for enjoyment?
Just for, uh.
Okay. All right. Keep it at company.
Sorry, Anthony can't do that. He's behind the camera.
All right, so next up, we have minutes of our previous meeting. July 1st, July 19. Have you got a chance to review?
I just want, I just want to amend that. I, uh, send the abstract.
Oh, okay.
The previous meeting.
I guess we.
July 1.
July 1.
I was here.
Previous meeting.
Previous should be, and not, not July 1.
I just slapped him.
I'm supposed to be with a white man.
Not a big deal, people, but just for the record.
I did correct you once.
I get corrected all the time, I know. It gets worse. No problem.
So, what you made and seconded, provided the change, dumping somebody's abstracts, long paper, those. Hey, thanks. Want to get the abstracts?
Speaking of abstracts.
Why not?
Anyway, um, now, listen, Lisa, I'm, I'm reading them today.
Okay, gotcha.
We're all good. Not him. Not him. Nope. No. He might help me, though, but I may screw it up. Um, let's see, let's see. I think just a lot. We're handling quite a bit on the channel. There's nothing terrible. Does anybody, does anybody have any questions on the channel? Any questions?
I went over my line and they actually, pretty, I don't know what it was, a lot of this. Just on the general, just in case, if you want big payments, I bet it's a thousand dollars. You have to go ahead.
Well, a thousand dollars for?
A hammer drill?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
And that went to our, I've had patch, uh, to help them with the hot hole repairs that their collapsed train.
They bought from Montana.
And it was left over monies from last year, so to carry over.
Okay, you can see that.
So you see that, just so you're aware of where it came from.
Perfect, perfect. That was from Montana, I suppose.
Right.
Okay. Anybody have anything else that I did? Number one, the total on the general, 134,301 dollars and 6 cents. Now, we'll go to water. Water was relatively quiet. Total on that one, 5,233 dollars and 72 cents. And let's see, micorino and wastewater, which are all right. Pretty good size. All right. Nothing we haven't seen before. Still haven't seen. Um, total on that one, 16,008,360. That's it, Mr. Bell.
What you made, seconded, long paper, all right, those. All right. Uh, some process reports. Mike, you want to go first?
Why?
Anyone should have a copy of my report. This month, residential segment, 111,000. Yeah, I think that's a little bit lower than the one come up before. I think it's very close. Income, over 30,000, which is a high, which is a high one. We had very little overtime this month. We had a little kind of 200,000 dollars in collections this month. I had to purchase some enzymes. Due to the ambient temperatures as well as all of the subjects that we've been getting, our effluent is, is looking very bad. So, purchased some enzymes, put them in the last couple of weeks, seems to have helped a little bit. It's, it's going in the right direction, let's put it that way. We'll see what happens in the future.
He's not calling towards lay down stuff.
I'm sorry?
Not calling towards lay down stuff. The odor?
I haven't, I haven't heard any complaints.
Oh, yeah, there is. It has been.
Wednesday, last Wednesday evening, like, very humid night, very, very strong odor of urine, which is typically not what we smell, but very, I mean, it's, it was terrible.
Well, that's, you, that's the odor controller.
The odor controller. There was a heavy odor of urine in here.
That's quite a surprise.
Yeah. I was surprised.
Honestly, I don't know how you would get that.
I don't either.
I was, that's why, but I was curious. You have a bunch of kids running around the neighborhood?
Or a giant cat.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's what the kind of problem.
Haven't seen any, man. No, we have foxes. They take care of the cats.
Hey.
I hate to say that. I hate to say that, but.
I saw a, I saw a fox.
He's a family of, you know, he's a fox. Anyway, um, we cleaned both of our, we drained, we cleaned both of our chlorine contact tanks. Hope that we could do a little clearer effluent. We had to close one of our septic tanks for a couple of days to get in it, clean it out. That's not really a fun job at all, but, uh, that was taken care of. Uh, we also have been noticing in the last couple of months, a higher amount of rags coming through the channel, possibly caused by our grinder not running. To rebuild our grinder, just for the parts, is about 26. What kind of rags? What kind of rags are you talking about?
The rags that are.
The wifey things?
The wifey things that you can't, that don't tear apart. They're more like a claw now.
No, I know they are.
Yeah, and they just, they just go even through the grinder. What they do is they go through the grinder.
Like those cloths?
And they just conform to the shape and they go through.
The baby ones.
Yeah, yeah. And what happens is when they get into our grinder pumps, if you get a wad of that, it will.
So the bar screen's not catching them?
Bar screen is catching them. I think the bar screen is doing a better job than the grinder, only because it stops them. But still, in all, you do get some that go through. So the bottom line is, you know, do I replace this unit at 40, 45,000 or do I get the parts for 25 plus thousand? And in that case, I'm going to need a, a bearing press to press the bearings on and off. So I've, I've been holding off. Never holding off. Also, we've had electrical problems on our belt press. We have to replace some of the contacts in there. Fortunately, I'm having a problem getting those contacts because of the age. We may have to convert a little bit to make it work, but I'm sure it'll happen. I'm sure we're gonna get it to work. We are finished delivering our sub pump notices door to door. That was done a couple of weeks ago. We did have quite a few responses and inspections, so I'm pretty happy about that. What else is going on?
Mike, I'm sorry, Mike. Did you follow up on, how did you follow up on our notices?
We put the notices out and people usually call me up and we would go up and inspect. We wouldn't inspect unless they called.
Okay.
And then we inspected them and if they had a problem, they were fixed and, or we guided them through. And 90% of them weren't, didn't even have sub pumps, which was quite a surprise. So, yeah.
And what was going into the?
Uh, I had a nasty letter from EPA saying that our suspended solids were too high and that was based on rainfall going through.
Oh, like, odor's going into?
Go, right. And we've inspected all that. So, so what we've gotten, what we've inspected, over 90% of those were no problems whatsoever. No problems. So, um, that's pretty much it. But I do want to thank the highway department. Rich is not here, but those guys, I'm proud to say they work as a team. They work as a, a good team. I got Pat, Fred, and Sean, and Paul in the back. They have gone above and beyond to help us out and they jump right in the hole and they do the job and, and do a great job together. It seems like it's a, a well-oiled machine now. So I'm very happy to say.
Mike, I want to ask you that, that part that you were just talking about for.
It was 10 parts.
The one that 45 versus 25,000, that part?
Oh, yeah, that part, okay.
That part. Um, if you only got the part to fix it for 25,000, how long do you think? Any idea of what it'd be?
Uh, how long will it last, you're asking? Uh, that, with that, with that unit to grind, it would have, as the switch comes in, it grinds it all up and it sends it on its way. There used to be a program with the company that we dealt with that take the old one back and give us a new one for 20,000. And that would usually last us two to three years. Stuff that comes in is so aggressive, it just tears those blades apart. Once those blades start getting dull, they're fighting, they're fighting each other and that's what happens. So you're gonna get three years, roughly, out of it.
So if you bought a new one for 45?
The new ones are, the new ones are, I don't, I can't speak for the new ones. I'm sure there's improvements on the new ones, a different way that they go through the system, but I haven't seen one, to be perfectly honest with you. So I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know if the commercial grades are like the residential ones.
Oh.
But I had the residential guy come down, look at mine.
Yeah.
And he said he'd prefer they had to rebuild the older ones because they're much better and sturdier than the newer ones.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's what I was gonna suggest, if you can, check it out, check out the new ones, so we have a better idea, let me.
Well, I don't know where to go to do it, because we talked to the company and there's none to be found other than pictures. I don't want to travel, travel here, there, never where to take a look at. I have some, some literature on some of them. They seem to be some improvements, major, I don't know, but they do seem to be some improvements. Actually, it's a different company and it makes a great grinder. The gentleman was down at Mike's place, Mike, I don't remember the guy's name, but anyway, he had a grinder system that was very nice. It would grind everything up and take it out of the water, put it on a, put it on a conveyor and dump it into a truck or a dump truck, and it's gone, it's done with. That would probably be a big step in the right direction, but that's also a big step in ours.
So my suggestion would be to get with Alex on that grant that we talked about previously and put that on your wish list and that would be on that grant?
It is on my wish list and Alex did tell me just now that he's talked to, tried to talk to several congressmen, left messages, but no returns. So, that's where we're at. So we're on, we're on. So, any, any questions?
At least have it as a call.
Have you tried Amador's office, Alex?
Hmm?
Have you tried Amador's office? Senator Amador's office?
Which up?
Senator Amador's.
Oh, okay. That would be good for that, that's.
Because Tokyo's like, what?
Yeah, because he's the one that got it, someone who drove over here and Alex already.
Okay, I'll, I'll get over that.
Well, you want, send, send me a direct letter. I'll send it to him if you want.
Okay.
Okay?
You gotta be aware of, you know what I'm saying, put it on that wish list, get it on a grant, and get what you want. A novel budget, a save budget.
Yeah, there's a wish list there and some things have to be done, so maybe I'll just talk to her later. Any other questions? Thank you. Big fight. You're up next.
Evening.
You just said you were ready.
Yes.
Did you make a little?
30 million, 517,000 gallons for the month of June. Just over many gallons per day. Since this hot weather's in, we're exceeding now, we're about 1.1 on average over the past couple of days. And despite a little rain in the next few days, it doesn't look like it's gonna let up. We've got another hot weekend in store. We did not take the plant offline during the month of June. We had no significant rain events. 27 requests for line locating from DigSafe. Colin has been out preemptively marking the route that the gas main is gonna be installed along by Mullins over the next one or two they're gonna start, I think.
We'll start the end of, start the end of July, yeah.
Of course.
It's gonna be a three.
Gotcha.
Where are we this time?
It's the south side.
South side, yeah.
Well, it's starting on Ulster Avenue. They're connecting at the intersection of Elizabeth.
Going down Livingston, First Street, West Bridge Street, East Bridge Street. We did let North end up three years ago, two, two years.
Rich and I had a, Rich and I had a pre meeting that was done a month ago. We're gonna have another pretty actual start. We're sending out notices on our customer claim. Remember to sign up every last time for the county, looking for more people.
Our pre-filter project, we've had electrical contractors on site. They've been running conduit, preparation and delivery of the filter near the end of July. Haven't heard anything different as far as the date on that, so expecting it by the end of July. Health department took a random sample, bacteriological, on our system at Stewart, so everything came back to minus negative. We've been mowing and landscaping around the plant and we prepared the fire hydrant on the corner of Pavilion Street and Motor Drive, which I reported last month had been hit. And that's rebuilt back in service. Questions?
Mike, just a quick question on that. Fire hydrant did we set? Can we add a rebuild? I'm assuming load vehicle had it? We get it or we, did we have any notice of being hit or we just had to replace it?
Yeah, we had notice of it being hit.
Did we get any insurance money back from that claim to fix it?
No.
We get one something like that. Is there a test?
It was, yeah.
Was it a resident or?
It was a building employee.
Ah, so it's not on insurance. I didn't, you need to go there.
I'll stick a baby town for you.
Well, we were helping out the staff. We were grinding a stump there. One of our guys, a lot of cat impacted.
Yeah, I mean, with the field and stuff like that, with the vendors coming in, you know, even on a field, so.
And normally when someone does hit in traffic apps, they just want.
We do.
I try, it's difficult, though.
Yeah, and that's why I'm wondering is when we get a, if there's a police report and we get it, do we get that information and collect it? That's all I was, I think I was thinking at, not necessarily that one.
It's hard to put foot in mouth.
It's all about your own DPD.
Yeah, I know, exactly.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. What was going on on Partition Street today?
Mike was talking about.
That's where it was?
It was similar.
Oh, that's true.
That's probably what's up, Peter.
What's that?
That's probably what's going to be, part of this one.
Yes, it is. Petition post, yes.
Yeah. But that's where that was.
It was out, yeah.
Okay. I had a feeling it was something.
More passes last Friday.
There was a sinkhole there and they played it over until this week.
Correct.
Got you.
They had to repair it.
Thank you.
Steve, can I go?
Oh, sure.
So this is going back to the police reports from June this year. Department handled 1,550 calls for the month, 584 of those made in the village. Also in the village, we opened 12 new detective cases at the monthly total of 33, so 36% for detective cases opened in the village. We had 21 arrests in the village, three felonies, 10 misdemeanors, and eight violations. We had three arrested for unlawful possession of marijuana, which I don't think that's gonna be going on for too much longer, but anyway. We executed three warrants in the village, issued 23 UTTs, the pardon tickets, and investigated 21 accidents for the month, one of which was a PI, but I'm still happy to report not that one. We've not had one fatal accident in the village more than four years so far. Couple of other things to report on quickly. You've probably seen, if you were around 4th of July or the car show, the re-implementation of our bike patrol.
Yes.
We have a number of officers that are certified. In addition to using that for special events, you gotta see the non-first Friday when you have more pedestrian traffic. They really worked out great from the 4th of July. They're good for putting out fires along the parade route and getting to calls where lars can't. Obviously, with the car show, everything's blocked up six ways from Sunday, but I can get those bikes anywhere in a very short period of time. Also, in response to an incident we had at the beach, was that last week, George?
Yes, sir.
We should, Department directed that any time just in the climate, weather, thunderstorms, things like that, village car would be dispatched down to the beach to assist the lake guards to evacuate the beach so that the leak is the lake guard's warrant. That's pretty much all I have to report unless anybody asks any questions. Thanks, man.
I think it's happy. Okay, down at the Lions Club playground, where weed whacking is on a weekly basis, the waiting pool has been very busy, especially with the C W that 40 or 50 kids stop by each day. They seem to come in waves, 10 or 20 of them at a time, and this group goes for lunch and the lake riders take over. A few hours later, nap time for these kids. It's a constant wave of kids coming in and out. And, but it's good to see them using the pool. We're at Teen Jarvis Park. We're mowing, weed whacking on a weekly basis. And we marked about seven trees that DPW is going to take down when they get the chance. We've also had to do some, something about the people driving their vehicles down to the kayak launch area. It's supposed to be parked in the parking lot and take your kayaks down, but they're just backing right down. So I think we'll put some ballocks in, put some, maybe nautical rope or something along those lines, just to try to keep the people out. It's on the right side of the new road as you're going down to the Arm of the Sea property. Down this village beach, we're mowing and weed whacking weekly, and this has been a little busy place, but the weekends are even busier. We had about 100 people last weekend. We've had people complaining about the milfoil, the water jessence, and other seaweed. We at one time had discussions about a harvester as one way of trying to keep the weeds at bay. I haven't heard anything else other than for what we're going to be doing. And people have also suggested using chemicals to try to suppress the growth. I'm looking for some direction and for some answers that'll help deal with this problem other than what we're doing. Here at the village hall, got firehouses and down in the auditorium, we're doing our daily janitorial duties. The watering crew is busy with plants around the building, hanging baskets, corn boxes, and all the new trees that we put in. A big thank you goes out to the firemen for another great parade and the Lions Valley for the fireworks display. And another thank you to Bob and Myra Savicello from Toy Motors on their successful car show. And up at Seaman Park, we're mowing and weed whacking weekly and watering just about every day. It's just been a long freezing without a hell of a lot of rain, so.
I think, this morning, I was thinking about that down beach, the weekend, we're stopped down. And I can't find a place that'll rent a harvester. Like, I visit over, you know, somewhere besides Donald's looking to where, hey, if you want to buy one, I mean, there's all kinds.
78,000?
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I mean, I can't find a.
A car.
I know, I tried years ago. Like, eight years ago, I tried to find someplace that would rent to us, and I couldn't find it. And I did get some phone calls and emails this last week that the village was putting chemicals in.
We've never used.
Oh, okay. I think since I was away, I.
We've already, we've already.
I know. Well, that's what I said, but since I was away, I didn't want.
There's no, there's no, there's no history study long enough that can even determine whether there's any.
Long-term harmful effect.
Long-term harmful effect.
Well, they did, like, down in Solomon County, and it killed all fish and killed everything, and they, created a whole lot more havoc. Right. Neighbors got drinking water.
Not considering, it's gotta be chemicals. I mean, I didn't get the kids out there in the roads. I, I'm sort of lost. I mean, I don't know why I can't find, I can try to town these offices again.
You could, yeah.
One harvester, 78,000 dollars. Right, Matt, we'd go on to discussion on how we would get the money and it didn't come to light, so that's all I have to say. 78,000 dollars, you got a harvester, you can use it, rent it, whatever we gotta do, we always gonna use it. We're gonna use it up or in the long?
Since the supervisor was different, because maybe, maybe you'd call, maybe you can have better luck. But I think it's more liability.
Liability and.
And insurance and.
Bringing it up, and you gotta have.
Yeah, that somebody has to know how to do it. We can't operate it. They have to operate it. And yada, yada, yada.
We also looked at those ones where, like Alex, we met about Tetris in back of the boot.
Well, that one there, the one that we, Alex sent us, he meant was, you throw in the water and you bring it out, you know, with a rope, you know what I'm saying? And that's for like close quarters.
Basically, that's what you're doing now with.
Exactly. You're throwing it on shore. Are you getting a problem right at the beach area right now that's starting?
No, we're getting from the beach area, right on, it's really shit.
Yeah, because I, when I looked the other day, it looked like it was still out.
Well, yeah, you can't see the beach area because we've done that.
Okay.
And we eradicated some of it, not all. But if you look out, far enough by the salt creek, it's a reef that serves the area. You got different shades of green, one of them being a lily head, one of them being water chestnuts, and one of them being milfoil.
Absolutely.
Uh, yeah, should I have some guy that was trying to give us a demonstration?
I contacted him, I discussed it at one of the previous meetings, I contacted him. He's got his own property that he wanted to lease up there, you know, and right now, he's busy doing his own stuff right now. He's got rentals and all kinds of stuff. He's got to keep that property for them, waterskiing and boating and he's kind of, you know.
That's one of the biggest problems is there's more kayaks on the creek than there is motorboat engines. So.
What's next, Tom?
Oh, the motorboat deck.
Well, as I was going to say, why don't we could change that, could we?
It's not a change. You're not using it. It's all going. People are using them because of the.
They could have horsepower, imitation wings in the mail.
I think it had to do back in the day with the wings.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it did because back in the day, they had the old cigarette cigar booths.
So how about if we contacted like the powerboat?
Princes?
And ask them if we could have some sort of.
Without our skiers?
Yeah, yeah, once in a while, once in a while, I don't know, once every couple of weeks or something. If some of them would bring their boats up and do it.
It's not going to solve the problem, it's going to be.
No, but it will help. Nothing's going to solve it.
If you did it earlier in the year, it would probably help a little.
Would help.
Push it over the dam. Now you're turning down by your boat club or back by the boat club, Jeff. You know what I'm saying?
Well, that's what you're supposed to. Well, let it go, Jeff.
So that's why it's important that we discuss this and we'll probably keep discussing it. So if we like to get the money to buy it, is we need a harvester here in the village.
I bet, I bet if we looked at one, we could build our own for half the price.
Okay.
Well, here's.
How does I?
I can hammer. I can hammer.
We had a couple, one issue come to us and said they're going to pull together volunteers and go out with their boats and help, and then they never come back.
I know, I know. That's why I'm thinking the powerboat.
The other, the really thing you need is basically a rake. It goes down to the sediment and rakes this up because you're only pulling up the top of the leaves and not getting the root or anything. You got to get down there and rake that soil and get that chestnut base seed out of there. And that's, you know, a harvester's only going to cut like a hay field, they cut the top.
So the harvester and a boat, and the boats are going to do the same thing?
Well, what happens is with the boats and motorboats is it kept the soil agitated underneath. So they can sit and ski and.
Cow heads.
Cow heads.
Right, right, right.
And in the winter time, we had higher or colder winters that froze and captured it and pulled it out.
Yeah, if you had a big ice slope, like years and.
Yes, right.
It would make the rake bottom and get rid of a lot of it. Well, we haven't seen one of them.
Where's the child at?
Well, we're in the middle of July now.
You're not going to get it right now.
We had started this discussion, if you remember, we started this discussion in January, but I brought up in January saying, let's not sit here in July and have another discussion about water chestnuts.
George, you have another question, just before you go.
What? Here we are again, so let's work on getting the problem. You know, I'm sorry to say, you're not going to solve the problem.
Back in May.
Out of what you're doing.
Back in May, you're still optimistic, this guy was going to come in June or July.
But back in February, I was still optimistic, then we'd buy a harvester. After I said, hold off on buying a truck and hold off on buying this. And we had a hundred and twenty, if you remember our meeting, we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand. A harvester is seventy-eight thousand. That would leave us more money in the budget. I'm only asking to hold off on this equipment for one year than we would have had. But we needed the equipment, you said it's necessary, and that's it. That's the way I look at it, and that's the way I go with it. That's it, you know what I mean? So I would say, let's all get on the bandwagon and talk about next year. Because now we're in the middle of July, and it ain't going to happen.
But that's not how I saw the budget meetings going, so.
No, this was a meeting that I, me and you had.
Yeah, but we didn't talk about eliminating.
Yes, we, I said write the budget bill. I had the budget, in fact, I still have it home with a mark. If you eliminate this car, if you eliminate this dump truck, that's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, but those are different departments.
I know. Okay, all came from the general budget. And it's not all in one year. Well, thousands, it's not over five-year lease.
No, I, listen, we had many discussions about it, obviously, and they come out. I, I know as of May and April, you're still saying there's a chance this guy may cannot, you can talk to me about, we can open the hotel room and take him up to dinner for a night. And that was back in February, I was like, man.
And I emailed the guy, the guy's busy, he's got his stuff going, he says his equipment, he's got his stuff going. He might, maybe I can get him coming September.
I know, I know, I'm just saying.
He's got his own business.
I see you trying to escape.
The last meeting I had, we're talking about, I got here this year, I need to find money in the budget to get, purchase one for next year. That was the last discussion we had. This guy came, he would buy us a year.
And you know as well as I do, if the guy even came one weekend, he's not going to do much on that quick in one weekend. It was more of a demonstration to show how the harvester worked.
Which is also something we need done before we make a seventy-five thousand dollar purchase.
And unfortunately, my research that I have on the harvesters is that they don't do demonstrations. You know, you're welcome after you initially make that purchase, or they know you're making that purchase, they'll send you to the one place, it was Boston Harbor, that they have one. You're welcome to go down and take a look. I asked them where it was, they wouldn't give me the information because I'd love to take a ride, look at it, see it in the water. But we can actually look at one, we can go down to the surface and look at and see how it runs. Mr. Bono, what do you need?
Okay, the, the Oster County Corrections are back in action. Vince Decker retired, but there's a gentleman, his name is Austin Mitchell. And I was wondering, did you give him a call?
I did not give him a call, but I would find it, but I'll do that.
Okay, okay, I talked to him today. He's trying to set up a schedule. He has free, scheduled free after August sixteenth. So if you want to get ahold of him, try to book him, he'd be going on that house.
Can we get the president's white preserve and go full weeds?
Hey. Give him a scuba suit.
That's the benefit of going down.
Just give him a scuba.
You got to give him weed notes.
A bunch of rocks, rocks in the fire.
But you give him a clocks, I told you would, and set up, he's got open schedule after the sixteenth of August. Okay, thanks, George.
Yep.
Alex, you're up.
Well, let me just tag on to the discussion we were having. Somewhere I got a notice from someplace on the byway of the Erie Canal that they had had a community day for everybody to get out and clear the weed. And they had organized it and somehow gotten the whole community out there in boats, and they were all doing it by hand. And there was a picture of it. Somehow, because I've been doing all this research on this stuff, it, it got directed to me. So since we don't have a harvester or any chance of getting one, maybe we ought to try to organize something like that. How about putting the kayakers to work?
Well, I was going to say, I'll talk to Gail Porter.
I think that's Gail's answer.
Yeah, I think a couple of years ago, it was.
They did, they did. And we hauled it away, we put down the, the village DPW trucks down, and we moved the trucks all the way. And I had a group here about a month ago, a lady who said she was going to put together a committee and get back to us, and I told them to provide the trucks, we hauled stuff away, and I haven't heard back from her. So I mean, you know, and everybody's got a concern and everybody wants to help, but then nothing seems to kind of go where she.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't a new problem.
Maybe if I talk to Gail Porter at the kayak, if you put out a notice on the kayakers, we get enough people volunteering on a certain day, we can do something.
Make it fun with the barbecue.
Well, the other thing is, it's a sidebar with Jeffrey, where it's like, there's got to be some organization out there or at a, at a state level that's having the same issue, and we should be able to.
Well, it's a lot of things.
Say, now speaking of more of that, because of the stillness of the water, the nitrogen from the farms and stuff coming in here and settling here. So maybe we can look at a bigger picture and say, where can we get some money or grant other than funding at the same, regarding taxpayer factor?
That's not just a survey, is that?
No.
But going back, I'm sorry to ask him, contacting Gail to see, and making a whole day of it, with giving them food and a picnic and stuff.
Should we get a couple of beers everywhere?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm sure the harvester also would have some kind of payment plan over a couple of years. I don't think they would expect the whole seventy-eight thousand the first year. I'm sure they would have some.
They probably got a finance plan. They want all the money right away, we got to finance it through some institute.
Just like you do for one of these cars, dump trucks and everything.
We go through the names, and we got to find your, through the buyout.
And then we have to get somebody certified to operate it, because who can?
Okay, Dad, my discussion with them is they have, they come down and they train. They'll train some, a couple of people, they know what it is. It's just like, I'm sure Jeffrey could run it, you're a big boat guy, you know what I'm saying? Everybody drives a boat, I'm sure they can, or any kind of heavy equipment.
Yeah, sure, I got a couple of them here. Let her down and bring her up.
Get your shapes around, you can't run anything over out there.
It's like, you know.
Anyway, back to my report. I side back in there.
Thanks, Alex.
I am still fighting with entrenched bureaucracy, and all the people at Regent Eight seem to be new and not quite know the procedures. And they brought in a whole bunch of people from Albany and took over for a while, and then they pulled them out and took some of the best people to Albany, and now we're kind of stuck in between here. Mullin, as far as I can tell, is properly listed on the state as approved. But for some reason or other, we can't seem to get Regent Eight to approve of that. And they, it's a different procedure that they're supposed to have done, so they're going to try that and see if that will, will get them on board. And I do have a meeting with Johnny later in the week to review some of the procedures that we're going to handle some of this stuff. And I just threw in a little blurb on the electric vehicles there. It's just amusing, I went out the back door of the village hall, and here's a bright red chestnut right after I wrote that. As I started to drive out. And they, and more over the weekend, I saw them, I went to a party, and there were two of them at the party. So they seemed to be thriving.
Thanks, Alex. On table, Terry, you want to get P P W, you got an extra room?
As part of the leftover budget, along with the hammer, they bought a paint striping machine. So we had it in-house, and you can see they've been busy in the streets and they think got most of the painting done. We bought, and the Washington Avenue by the ball field, the tennis court, the football field, playground, that's all been done, and it really looks good. So it's paid for itself already. Myers Lane basically was, has been completed. I see here we have another sinkhole at the two-twenty-one Washington Avenue. They scoped that and fixed that. Petition Street, they had a sinkhole there on post, they helped out the water department. I don't know, didn't we scope that lower end, or did we stop at just the top of the hill at Selus when we did the sewer? Because we had one in front of our bellows two years ago, a sinkhole too. Did we finish sculpting or did we stop in that area from coating it?
I don't know if we're done yet or not.
Yeah, so that's, that's what it was. So we got that fixed. And again, they did a great job on cleaning up after the Fourth of July parade and put together everything that needed to go into that event. So good job to them.
As well as the car show.
The car show, yes. That whole weekend, that whole weekend.
I probably came in here Monday at the car show and actually treated that for lunch on Thursday. I'm a liar.
Not, not DPW business, but HRV business. The certain members of the committee are still adamant in historic district that if the business owner needs to replace or fix a sidewalk, for whatever reasons, because again, it's the building's owner's responsibility to maintain the sidewalk after it's put in place. They still want to insist on them using Bluestone if possible. And as we all know, Bluestone is tremendously expensive. It's in places, it's not in places. So one of the board members basically did some research on grants. And basically, most of the grants, the head agency needs to be the municipality. So they wanted to know if the village would be the lead in securing any of these grants. I couldn't make that decision, so I said I'd bring it to the board and let them go. The other issue is, who's going to be the grant writer for these? We don't have an official grant writer anymore.
If there's any federal funds involved, we're stuck with the mess we're into right now.
Correct.
We're having to meet ADA.
Okay.
And the ADA requirements are so unreasonable.
But if the, okay, so then realistically, say, fellow Luminas, when they wanted to replace their Bluestone sidewalk and put in heated concrete, HRV said, no, they would only allow Bluestone. For that business owner in that section only, do we have to meet ADA compliant? As far as curb cuts and all that?
If we get anything that's federally funded, yes, we do.
Okay.
If it's from some private foundation, absolutely not. And that particular area looks pretty level to me.
Well, I think they did end up doing some work in there when they, we couldn't, when we don't let them do the concrete. I think they did do a level.
I could test it out.
Sure, we did a little bit of work. Mike, you know, we like to do these sidewalks.
I know, I know. So I, I said I'd throw it out. Now that's a new twist there, because again, if we have, and, and the reason the building owners want to go with concrete is because of cost.
Sure.
You know, it's Bluestone, especially to get good Bluestone. It's three times the cost of concrete. However, if you could present to the building owner that, hey, with the grant, it's going to cost you twenty percent less to put in Bluestone than the concrete, it's an incentive for them to go with the Bluestone. So does that catch trade-off? And they catch one of those situations.
Is it per job, or do you actually stockpile Bluestone?
It would be per job.
Per job.
And the grants do, they take a year or two.
David said he was going to get a reach out to you, Alex, and let him know some of the institutions that he was working with. But he wanted to know, first of all, before he spent too much time on what's out there available in matching funds, if the municipality would be, you know, agreeable to be the lead. And I guess that's the only way we can get it, is if, like, the homeowner couldn't go apply for the grant, it has to be the municipality.
Terry, did we have, I was still with you, did we have a local company that, Imitation Bluestones?
Yeah.
That look very good. Is that something that HRV would be?
That's what they rejected, right?
Yeah.
They rejected Imitation looking, it was actually a member of the HRV board that brought that before, Brian Wilson.
Yes, right.
Exactly, that's stamped.
Well, it's actually made out of recycled glass.
Yeah, it's actually.
It was the guy on thirty-two.
Yeah, I put it from my house.
Yeah.
It does, it looks like Bluestone, right?
Yeah.
But the issue with that is the same issue as Bluestone slabs. Unevenness, popping and turning and getting it, keeping it level. And I mean, and like Alex knows now, you only can have an eighth inch lip for ADA compliant to go screwing around. They, they lowered it again with the new scope. It was a quarter, now it's about an eighth or three eights like that.
So not only that, the, the, the side to side slope of sidewalk. And these people don't understand, if the sidewalk doesn't drain, then you have ice there. And the very same people that they're supposedly trying to help are going to fall and break bones.
But through concrete, is that what you're talking about, concrete? Yeah, we were, well, we were doing basically stamped concrete to look like Bluestone. Because concrete, as you can see, with salt. Concrete does have a tendency to, you know. Look at Alex, we did that street when they did that project back in the eighties.
Salt kills concrete.
Oh, fell hard.
Yeah, because of the salt from the roads, when they were doing the roads, goes up on the sidewalk and eats the sidewalk away. Whatever it is that.
If it's real stone, it's pretty well, real Bluestone's pretty well forever. But unfortunately, so many of the people are palming off stuff that's not real Bluestone and charging Bluestone prices for it.
Yes.
We really only have one quarter in New York that runs. And that's a, that's a problem for the lead, that's what I'm fighting with right now, is to try to get this thing resolved so he can get the order in.
Okay, that's all I have to say there. Jeff? Nothing to report, thank you.
Vince? The only thing, nothing specific to the, well, it is specific to the village. We got announced here that we're going to be having a centennial. Well, we got announced here that we're gonna be having a centennial celebration for one hundred years of the American Legion, one hundred years at the end of World War One. We're gonna be having a parade on October nineteenth, I don't know if I can maybe mention that, but, is Steve still here?
Yes.
Okay. October nineteenth, we're planning a parade, Mike Carache is putting it all together for us, and he's gonna be going through the heart of the village, and we'll, we'll get you guys involved, okay, bring it over to a meeting. But yeah, so just the one to let everybody know, the board, you know, they're asking to shut down the village just along our parade route for maybe an hour or so, two o'clock, three o'clock, so that's kind of what we're doing. That's it.
And Vince, I'll go back to Mark and see if I can get you a list with it all, and then just, yeah, I'll let you know when that, when we discuss.
Okay.
So my understanding is the parade is starting in the field, and then go down Washington, and then somewhere around.
Yeah, I think we go towards Russell, go right down Main Street, to Market, and head actually, more over by Lafayette.
Somewhere to the one we use in the fire truck, like, not the fire, the Halloween, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, not this one.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, just Alex out of town, he's on the, diving. So, so, yeah, so just this report, everybody has it, you know, he updated on the cadet fire buildings, and so we can all see where we're at, some of the houses were sold, this is good. Forty-eight boats feet sold, thirty-nine Claremont sold, still nothing on forty-two posts, and the Russell's been removed. Okay, and he did Charles Park, he did a good walkthrough, like, north side, so he's acquiring about the south side, so we should go look into the money for that, to install what we need down there. And we have the CPR course for employees on August fourteenth, and he'll be continuing his monthly training on various subjects, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Janine?
Well, I was on vacation, so I didn't attend any meetings, but I do have, I did these minutes, so I get this. Two twenty-three. I guess there was a discussion about town and village having a joint meeting to start the renewal for the franchise agreement, so we'll be looking to set that up. The town may be looking to hire an attorney that has negotiation experience, and have us split the cost with it, that's what they're talking about, so we'll talk about that when we have this joint meeting.
What's a negotiation?
For the franchise, for Spectrum. So, you know.
One of our attorneys can't do that, gotta hire a special attorney.
The town attorney isn't capable, so I don't know if ours would be, they're looking to hire. It's only, it was in the minutes that I met, I was at the meeting, so it's just, the franchise meeting will be coming up, and they want town and village to come together to talk about how they want to proceed with it.
How long is this agreed, is that your five years?
Yes, five years. Yeah, and we, and the town always, what they did last time, I know, is we absorbed some of it, so we don't, so Time Warner, Spectrum, or whoever, doesn't upcharge to us the, 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 right. And there was also, they spoke a proposal to promote, to make the program coordinator full-time. So I don't know if that is something that we feel as a board we want to talk about, or you want more information on what's, what that would entail.
We already, we only give a certain amount, two twenty-three, so it shouldn't affect us financially, that should be their decision. Do you have our standard amount that we?
Basically, yes, but.
Come back and ask us for more money to make that happen.
Correct.
Decide on that.
And at the last chamber meeting, Sue Satcher from the high school, I don't know if anyone's familiar with her, she does a lot within, within the school district. She made a proposal that the chamber helped the high school with the book fair, I guess it's a book fair every year, they need more presents. So what they're looking to do is have the high school be more involved with the holiday in the village that the chamber sponsors, and pick like a snow king and queen, and have a float in the, in the parade that we have. And the float would be, depending on different stories on the books that they have at the, at the high school fair, so it's just, so, I just call that, well, yeah, right. The visitor center is open every day now from eight to six, and thank you.
Looks good.
Yeah, it looks really nice, yeah.
I walk in and.
Yeah, yeah, most of the stuff is out of my basement, but not all of it.
It's very neat, very nice to put together.
My basement's out. And Mark is still working on going with different companies to form a working, walking map of the village, paid for by ads. And I think that's it. The next, next chamber meeting would be the thirty-first, and it's at the barn, at, yeah.
That weird?
At the barn.
Sure, the barn's personal.
Right, and this, that Kirsten House, and the speaker's going to be someone that has to do with arts and how that helps in the community.
Janine, getting back to the Spectrum.
Uh-huh, yes.
Contract, service contract.
Yeah.
Isn't the village the lead agency in that? I thought the village was, last time I read the license agreement or whatever we had with them, I thought the village was the lead agency, so I'm, I'm just questioning that to see who's the driving force behind that, and.
Well, it could be that on paper we are.
Yeah, I think.
But the town has always taken care of.
Taken the leadums?
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering, why the town all of a sudden is picking up on us?
The town always adds.
I don't think so. If they have it, why would we be the lead agency on it? See, I thought we were in the, or the town tagged onto our agreement with them.
That's what I thought as well.
Well.
I mean, I don't, I don't know. I don't know, maybe look, maybe look in to see a copy of the contract, and I thought, we signed it last time. Yeah.
I think we did.
Yeah, we all have to, yeah.
So, I mean, I think we should, I, I would like to take an active part in the, that, sitting on the process.
Okay, well, that's what we really basically want to know, who wants to be involved?
But, you know, it depends on the time, I mean, I can't leave at ten o'clock in the morning, come up with a meeting, so.
So you were.
The committee is mostly people who have paid jobs, so it should be.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it should be, and Spectrum should accommodate that for us.
Yes, yeah, all right, so you want to be involved, good, great.
With a four-hour window.
Between twelve and four in the morning.
But I thought we were the lead agency last time, so I just struck it.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question for you. Now that that property is cleared on Russell Street, is that considered by today's standards a buildable one? Because you saw they all picked those houses.
Well, I, I just.
I think it has to.
Is that, is that big enough?
I think it has to, we have father.
But you gotta be.
It's gotta happen, it's gotta happen.
Six foot, six or three foot, set back.
Put another house in there like that was in there, because.
No, you'd have to put some smaller, we didn't lose the street. Okay, okay.
In Montgomery Street, they had two, that was an issue, they killed a house down, and they couldn't do it, because they wanted to put the same size.
It was a small house. From what I understand, at this current time, he has no intent, plans of re, of rebuilding.
Right.
He's actually considering making up, he didn't, one of his thoughts is just making a lot out of it, you know, and ride off street park and the houses around there, but I don't know if that's, that's something that's been discussed, you know?
So I just, I walked by, looked good, it's cleaned up, and I, this, I'm sure it's buildable, but that'd be like, it's.
Right, it's gonna have ten, it's gonna have ten feet inside and.
Right, right, it's gonna be a pretty small footprint.
Alex?
As your former building inspector, if it could be rebuilt on the existing foundation, provided you would have to have fire-resistant construction, that's, plus, you would have to have enough room between them to get in their.
Right.
The way that was before, it was.
You give them to you get your hand paper in there.
That's it, that's it. Thank you.
I have nothing else, we're gonna skip over, well, anybody want, you want to discuss the cat for her, as far as what she should request, as far as the forms?
All right, did you talk to her today?
Yeah, she did.
What's your update?
Well, she says she'll do whatever, she's flexible if you want, but it did, it did seem like the, the leaflets worked very well, and she was very productive and go out and work for her. So, but she's flexible if you really want to do it that way, and so far, she's got three or four cats from the actual forms that she's.
What else you want to cover?
Three or four from the.
Catch speed release program.
Okay.
So.
She's going to a new program that had, not a new program, but a new form, a new way to find out where the cats are.
So people come in, fill out a form.
They fill out a form.
Which are available in our office, so people come in and fill them out, and then Lisa can send them to her, so it's not really a lot of extra, they would come, they, they should call here first anyways, so they can, and we're, Lisa and I mentioned about putting the form online, the website, so they can actually download the form.
How much do you put that purchase for?
Five hundred.
And that usually gets us what, twenty-five, twenty-five cats?
Yeah, I think they won't hear.
That is about twenty-five.
And they throw us some.
Was it like twenty bucks a cat?
Yeah.
That's still about the going rate?
But previously, it was, somebody would call, and they'd have cats in our neighborhood, like over on Prospect Street or whatever, and we would go, they, we would go over, and then Kim took over, would go over and hand out the notices that we're gonna trap on such and such a date, keep your house cat inside, or put a collar on it, you know? So I think Kim's saying with the forms, it makes it easier for her to know exactly where that location is.
Yeah, and I think they look a little more precise, wouldn't they?
It just gives more accountability, who's requesting that.
I think it's her choice what she wants, and myself, you know what I'm saying, unless the board, I thought, she's the catcher, she's the tracker, it's gonna make it easy for her.
She does that, really.
Yeah.
It does.
We'll just tell her what, whatever works best for her, of course.
Sounds good.
All right. I got nothing else.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All favor, I propose.